Safe down there.
Yeah.
I always think about you guys, you know, probably the safest place of the camp.
Not bad. It's quiet.
Yeah.
Until a prisoner cleans the toilet.
Oh, that's wonderful.
I can remember coming back to work and hardly a weekend streaming.
Having so many reports all over my desk.
That was fun.
There was a drunk that just stepped in the through on the drunk tank to bail it. He was howling and turning on. He was howling, "What am I here for? What am I here for?" "I don't know what they're doing here." "I'm for drinking." "It's all good. When do we start?"
All right. I got nine. Are we ready? Lee, you're up and running?
Yeah, yeah. Should be streaming.
Okay. I am going to call this weekly meeting of the Cottington County Board of Commissioners to order. It is 9:00 AM Tuesday, May 26, 2020. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I think I'll have our emergency manager, Jamie, lead us today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jamie. Item number two, call for public comment during the COVID-19 event. We'll take telephone calls. The two numbers are 882-6297 and 882-6248, and those are for items that are not on the agenda that we will just take under advisement. And during the open portion of the meeting, we are streaming live on YouTube. And with that, we'll move on to item number three, conflict of interest. Is there any conflicts on any of the agenda items for any of the commissioners today?
No, no, no.
All right, very good. Item number four, action to approve the agenda for a motion.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Van Duzen. Any... okay, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. That motion carries. We're all here today, so I won't be having a roll call vote, so that will work out. Action on item number five, to approve the minutes of the May 19, 2020 meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Waterman. Any additions, corrections? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries. Monthly reports. Emergency management, Jamie. If you would like to join us. You can go ahead and pull it over there. That's fine. Thanks.
Should just talk. You know, there's no switch. It's all.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning, Jamie.
Early on, I'll just start with the... We continue to follow state and CDC guidance on our current fluid situation. Early on last month, we still met as a unified command team at 1:00 PM every day. And then on Thursdays, we did our full task force meetings with all the area stakeholders. We have now since relaxed at a couple weeks ago, we started going back to now we just meet at 1:00 PM on Mondays, which today will be that day for us as far as the unified command system is deemed. And then we still meet on Thursday mornings bright and early for our full task force meeting. So we continue to monitor all of our current situations as far as the COVID-19 is concerned. And typically, I also have meetings and briefings during the week on Wednesdays along with our state on weekly meetings as well with our state coordinator out of the OAM office. So far, also continuing to monitor the situation as far as PPE is a challenging thing right now. I think in the long-term run, as slow as things come back on, as the industry catches up, we need to continue keeping long-term effects or ordering and keeping a good cash supply. Currently, still challenged with cloth masks is what I've distributed for all of our frontline and healthcare workers. Currently, I'm sitting at about 3,800 masks. Still a few coming in, catching up on all of those things. A lot of donations and local resources have been made on our volunteer branch side of that. There was a decision made on the task force to give some masks to the public, and the volunteer branch went after some Watertown Community Foundation money to the tune of about $3,000, and we've got that. I found a resource locally to make us 1,500 masks, and those are available to the public through the Salvation Army. And they are the distribution point.
Jamie, could I interrupt for just one second?
Go ahead.
Do we know where we're at on the numbers on that? Because that... they were dropped off there, so we don't know where we're at for sure, do we?
We're not. Currently, I don't know that answer to... I'll call down to Carissa probably this morning.
Sounds good.
And see how they're sitting, whether we'd have to go after additional funds for that on the volunteer side. And I think that's probably doable.
Okay.
And the local resource that provided those 1,500 masks said they could do them again, so.
Thanks.
You bet. We also meet weekly on Fridays with our county task force, with our towns. And not a lot of new things out of them. We're dealing with long-term care providers such as Florence and then the Meadow Lake Assisted Living. We've appropriated some good PPE for them, which is medical supply type stuff that we get through the state part of health. And again, those things are kind of challenging. Sometimes we see them within a couple of days, and sometimes it's two weeks before we see them. But we do distribute them to those. And last week, they announced, I think they're sitting currently... What are they? This week, they're doing long-term testing.
Tier two.
On the tier two with the non-substantial counties and getting that out. Other than that, I've just continued to monitor with the highway superintendent here also. Then I took a quick drive through the county last week looking at some high-water stuff. I know our neighboring counties are dealing with the same thing, so that's still kind of a fluid situation as well. My rain gauge, I showed 6,000s of rain in the course of the last three days. Doesn't look like any of the river gauges are still way under action by a foot or two. Our lake levels at Pelican and Compesca remain about the same, just under action. And if my calculations are right, it looks like Compesca's at about 18 and a half feet this morning. And I think we're about a foot, foot and a half. And but flood, flood things kind of went by the wayside due to our current situation. Couple of things I've done down in the office, I did, and I know last week, I think you visited, or two weeks ago, I did update my phone system down in the ELC and went to the VoIP, which is voice over internet. And so far, it's working very well. In the long-term, I don't... we'll see what the billing brings, but that should save us a considerable amount in my office. We issued, going back to the masks, I think each county employee should have received five cloth masks for their own PPE for protection as we kind of move into our different phases of going back to normal. I see we, last early week of May, I believe, we received our SLA money from the state, which is our quarterly grant money. And I think FEMA is still continuing to work with on the last year's flooding and situations as well as doing some minor corrections and stuff and still channeling that as well. Other than that, I guess questions for me or not a lot for you today, just the current situation?
Just, Madam Chair, just with... In our back to new normal plan, the criteria would probably allow us to, with the exception of one, one criterion, probably allows to open up next week, so a week from today. You know, because the primary voting will take election days is a week from today. Do you... does that look okay to you based upon the PPE we have in place, hand sanitizer and stuff like that?
I think it looks very good myself. That's my own opinion. And, you know, I think we're there, along with new CDC guidance on that critical infrastructure, folks like ourselves. And once we open up, I think we have a lot of the appropriate countermeasures as PPE is up. I think they're still finishing up maybe down on the security side.
Okay.
Main entrance, but, you know, it looks like this closely monitor and follow those guidelines provided by the state and the CDC. And I...
Okay.
Hopefully, transition back to that normal.
Okay.
Somewhat normal.
Yeah. Yeah.
Are you able to stick around till we talk on number 13 or come back? I did get a call from the extension. I think we'll just wait and discuss it under COVID practices.
Okay.
So, anyway, we'll just leave it for then, I guess, if that's okay. And just kind of get your input.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, if there's anything needed out of my officers, all kinds of guidance and situation reports that I get once a week out of the state, so.
Right.
Appreciate the communication, Jamie. Kind of fell into this COVID thing right at the beginning of your career with the county here, and you're doing a great job, so. Keep up the good work. Thank you very much.
One other question.
Yes.
So on the... I noticed the case count in the county went up quite a bit.
Thirty-two.
And that's, I'm guessing that's due to the... to additional, you know, we're doing a lot more testing right now. And that's kind of one thing. When the governor announced her back to normal plan, she talked about we need to focus on, you know, avoiding hospitalizations, dealing with that issue, but because we know the case count's going to go up. Is that, is that just the additional testing that's causing that, or?
I think a lot of it's additional testing. I know there's some of the HIPAA and privacy laws, but I know that there's an age factor where some of it's getting to our younger
Yeah.
generation. That's kind of a community spread right now, but we'll continue to monitor
Yeah, okay.
those fluid things, but, yeah. I think a lot of it's the long-term. I think that last week was 143 of the long-term care facilities, and I know we've had a couple in our region
Yeah.
that have had some active cases.
Okay, thank you.
I think the key thing to... that we kind of get out of our state people is to watch our hospitalization
Right.
side. And I see that spiked quite well in the last couple of days. I think we're back up in the 90s. We're kind of tapered off, but.
Okay, that's statewide, though.
Statewide, correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct. Ninety, 91 or 92 cases, I believe.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, they really want to watch that as far as, I think, as far as the numbers concerned, as far as surge.
Yeah.
Where our local hospital is set up to handle 172
Yeah.
extra beds, and we were part of that as well with our pot program.
So what I saw, just for... since everyone's wondering what we're talking about, so we're just talking about the active cases of COVID that result in hospitalizations statewide. And so when you look at the... the state has some really good graphs on their website. And you can see in that that that's still well under the capacity now that we have to deal with those kind of cases in the hospitals throughout the state, so.
Yeah, preliminary on. I think we were scheduled as an isolation or surge was concerned was 500, and that number changed so fluidly weekly. Now it's 170, I think, is what our... and that's what they designed the local facility to do.
Great.
So, and I know there's some active numbers kind of up and down in our neighboring counties here and there, but it looks like they're on their recovery rates. And it seems that watching numbers every day as far as positives and negatives, it's about a 50-50 split when you kind of look at those numbers. 4,000 and some
Yeah, statewide.
active statewide versus 3,500 recovered.
Okay, thank you.
And that's the thing, too, like for Cottington County, we have our surrounding smaller towns that utilize our hospital as well. So we do need to take some of those numbers into account because they could eventually end up going to the hospital, so.
Correct, you know, and some of those neighboring counties may come to our regional facility as far as positives, but we just, we just got to watch the county number.
Mm-hmm, for sure.
How many do we have hospitalized at this point? At this point, how many are hospitalized with that COVID?
In Cottington or statewide?
In Cottington County.
In Cottington, I can't answer today, but I think last week, I don't think we've had one that's been hospitalized, to be honest. They've been treated and isolated.
Some of the cases are still active, in other words, they're not covered yet, but they're not.
We have 30, 32 cases now. Seventeen have recovered, so.
Yep.
That's what we have active as of today.
Fifty-fifty thing where they just changes so fluidly.
All right. Any other questions?
We're at 99 cases right now as of today that are hospitalized. Sunday, it was 85, so it went up 14.
And that's statewide.
Statewide, yeah.
So we could have some in our hospital, we just don't know, and sometimes it's HIPAA things, we won't know.
Neighboring counties, De County has 12 with nine recovered, Dual County has one that's recovered, Hamlin County has four cases, three recovered. Roberts County has 35 with 16 recovered. So those are the counties that are neighboring us.
Right.
Yeah, so Roberts has quite a few still not recovered them. All right. Anything else?
Thank you, Jamie.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thanks, Jamie. We will move on to item number seven then, action to approve the 2020, 2021 malt beverage license applications. What do you have, person?
We have three applications. Dakota Stew Casino, South Fork Lounge, and the Rooster Bar are all renewing, applying to renew their malt beverage licenses.
So move for him.
Motion by Johnson to approve.
Second.
Second by Waterman, and we've heard nothing as far as any reasons why we shouldn't, so.
Nope.
All right. Any other comments? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries. Item number eight, action to approve the 2020 County and Consolidated Board of Equalization Minutes.
Let's have separate motions on those, please.
Okay. All right, so first we'll do the 2020 County Board of Equalization Minutes.
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Van Duzen. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries. Now we'll do the 2020 Consolidated Board of Equalization Minutes. For a motion on that?
Oh, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Gable. Second.
Second.
Second by Van Duzen. Any discussion or questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries also. Item number nine, action to approve an employee's cellphone stipend.
Correctional Officer Matt Blackwelder submitted a request for a cellphone stipend for Sean Nils, who was just appointed to Deputy Corrector, Sergeant Corrections, one of those two positions. I'm not sure which it is.
Sergeant.
Sergeant.
Correctional Sergeant.
He is requesting a $40 per month cellphone stipend beginning in June for Mr. Nils.
All right.
Make a motion.
Motion by Gable. Do I have a second? I'll second that motion. Any discussion?
Just, we had talked about lowering these cellphone stipends. I think in this particular case, this might be determined by the union agreement. And I'm not sure if that's...
No, it's not.
You might remember. It's not?
No.
Okay, well.
Cellphones are not part of the union agreement. I don't believe.
For stipends.
For stipends. I don't believe so.
I think the issue, though, right now is that it's, it's a, it's kind of the standard policy. So we probably are due to look at that again. We've mentioned it before that, you know, with the fact that everybody has a cellphone nowadays and the plans are a little better, we would want to be looking at this probably with a different policy, which is... My phone, for example, costs about $40 a month, so, you know, for the whole plan, so. But on the other hand, this is kind of the, this is the agreement we have at the moment, or the kind of the policy we have at the moment, so.
Right, because I think Steve updated some of his, and that made a difference, too, on the...
Originally, when this, these monies were set at $40 a month, and they've been going up, that's when cellphone bills we were paying by the minute. Now my cellphone bill, or anybody can go to Verizon and get one for $34, including all the tax. I... So this is paying for his whole bill or their whole bill unless they choose to have lots of goodies on board. But a basic cellphone, you could get a smartphone and go to Walmart and $35 a month.
Well, we're going to have to make some tough choices here coming into this next budget. I mean, we're going to have to cut in areas that we haven't had to cut before, I mean, to get through this.
I can't support this.
All right. Any other comments?
So, I don't know if anybody recalls the, just a question maybe for the general crowd. So the current policy, some employees we do $40 a month, some I think we do some 25.
Depending on the type of phone that you have.
I thought it was department heads, we were given 40 and...
No, it's, it's based, like, the deputies all have $40 stipends. I know the Director of Equalization, I think theirs are lower, 25 or 30. I'm not sure which, but.
I don't know if we want Matt to come up and explain this, I guess. If you guys would want better clarification, we could move it down a ways and then come back to it.
I think we just need to review it very thoroughly before we enact the new budget for next year.
Right, we talked about that, that we kind of need to go through.
And that's, that would be the time to do that. And, and I know that I could get shot at, but I got a good notion just to recommend that we just take them all away and start over.
Didn't, didn't...
That's probably stir some people up, but that's what we would...
Okay, you actually took mo... you actually took action the beginning of the year to allow cellphone stipends based, you know. You would have to rescind, you would have to rescind that if you're going to stop it in the middle of the year. Or, I guess I'm not sure what your intention was when you
I think it's just something...
suspend them now or at the end of the year? Something to think about.
Rick, go ahead.
My phone is full of pictures of like FEMA stuff. I'm just about out of storage, so I'm going to have to do something. You know, a lot of pictures are probably some of my own, but I have a lot of work pictures on there. You know, if I stop looking at all work or whatever.
Can you? Can you not upload those to your computer? Clear up space on your phone?
Did I get the clock on my computer?
Um...
Well, it's one of six or one, that doesn't matter, but
Oh, I get it.
I'm constantly taking pictures, and when I can delete them, I delete them, but
I have
I get a lot.
Yeah, I have something where every month it's like 99 cents to get the cloud.
I already got it.
You do have that, okay. Oh, boy.
I'm glad those... I'm glad those pictures are on your phone, and I know that you share them regularly, and I'm glad you don't send them all to my phone.
Yeah, because
So, yeah.
For a picture from way back, you know. Because we're still feeling the last year's.
Oh, yeah. That usually doesn't get settled for several.
And I have some printed off and some on my computer.
Yep.
So, I got a bunch.
Right.
I'm guessing that yours and maybe Jamie's are used more than a lot of the other employees with cellphone stipends.
I'm saying both your law, but I think through Apple on the cloud, what, five gig of it? With storage, and mine is doing the same thing as his. I have uploaded some, just a maker. But I think there's, I'd have to thoroughly investigate one more on what else that person could eliminate.
I mean, we could always go back to digital cameras with memory cards in them, and you guys can use those and upload them to your computers.
It's a little tough when you're off the road.
I know.
You might get calls to, he sent you this picture. Yep, you know, when I'm on my Wallace or something, so I just go through and pull everything out. So, Lynn also does the same, though.
We are truly a society of convenience. There's no question about that, but we're going to have to look at... I think we, you know, I don't know, is there a motion?
Yep, we got a motion.
And then a second.
All right, well, I would support approving this right now, but we're going to have to take a look at this come the next budget year and decide what we're going to do with the cellphones, because that is a significant expense to the county. And I'm not so sure that if those people are called when they're not working, that they would answer their phone. Maybe they would. I don't know. But I think that that should be a requirement if we're paying half of your cellphone bill that you're on call.
Well, if we call you, my guys, when they get called, they don't if they don't answer right away, they're calling you back.
Yeah, okay. All right.
And I think we have mentioned that, that is, that is something that we need to kind of take a look at, maybe see if there's some ways that we can continue, but yet a cost savings that... Try to figure that out.
Well, I will tell you, I've been using my personal phone for photo IDs for voters, and it does not cost me anything extra. If they aren't, if they don't have access to a copier to make a copy of their photo ID, they've been texting it to me, and then I immediately delete it from my phone, so I don't have their personal information on my phone. But it doesn't cost me anything.
Yeah.
Anything extra.
Part of the data, in most cases, it's part of a data plan. If you get a ton of stuff, then you might have to pay extra for a cloud, you know, some extra cloud storage, but which is not a self part of your cellphone bill, that's a different bill. But, anyway, so.
All right.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Van Duzen on this one. We probably just need to address this per policy and then, you know.
Yeah.
So we're working on the budget, starting to work on the budget for next year, and that's one of the things that will be included in the budget.
Yeah, well.
Have to review it.
It'll have to be reviewed because we approved it in January, so it's something we'll have to come up with before that time period to change any, make any changes.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think so. I think to answer Commissioner Waterman's question, so, you know, it's in an apartment budget, so we need to give them a policy to say this is, you know, for this kind of, this kind of duty, it's this start on, or you don't get a stipend or whatever, you know, kind of set a policy that would guide them as they budget. So that's...
Because they do include it in their budget, so, yeah.
Do you have any comments, Becky, on?
I mean, we, like, my office, I mean, Becca and I are on it, Becky's not on it yet, but it'll be soon. And we're answering emails all the time. That's probably one thing, I mean, most of my phone is answering work emails, and I get phone calls at home that I answer.
I was the one probably that pushed Becky to get a county phone, because we sat in negotiations with the labor union, and we were at, I think, negotiations for about an hour or maybe two hours, and it was all on Becky's phone. And I said, "Well, you shouldn't be using our own phone," and I think that's when we got one for you, so.
I don't, I don't disagree with the fact that we have county employees that need cellphones. What I disagree with is everybody that were supplementing their cellphone bill need to have the county do that. I don't know. And so we need to, we need to take a look at who's all getting that stipend and evaluate the need for them to have it. That's just one area that we're going to have to look at come this next budget.
And then the department heads can come to us and do the explanation as to why, you know, they, who needs, I mean, why they are requiring this, so at least that way they can weigh in on that.
I mean, and Sean may, Sean may be a person that needs it. He's sergeant in the jail, and I'm sure he's probably going to get calls from his jail staff with questions and stuff after hours. So, I mean, that's something that we have to look at.
All right, so are we ready to vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. Item number 10, action to approve a bridge replacement resolution and application for federal funds. Rick, would you like to give us an explanation of that, please?
If you didn't push... Oh, yeah. There we go. Good morning.
Morning, Rick.
This is for the bridge on Sukanifer Road, our county road 13. I had received an email earlier this spring with a list of bridges that we could apply for, and this is one that we should apply for to get the ball rolling. We may not be approved by the state for this, but it's... We've got several bridges that are on main roads that are going to be need replaced before too long, and this is one of them.
All right, this has been on the list for many years.
It's been on the list for a while.
Yeah.
And it's, it's a pretty good size, you know, because it's a federal share of 81.95 and a local share of 18.05%. It's still, you know, this is almost a $2 million bridge.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, the price just keeps getting higher.
Yeah.
All right, you heard Rick's explanation, or someone wanted to make a motion to approve this.
Move, oh, so move.
Second.
Got a motion by Johnson, second by Waterman. Any other discussion?
So this, can we do the resolution and application in one motion?
Yeah.
That's okay.
Yeah.
All right.
You know, and this, this is no guarantee that we're going to be approved for, by the state for this, so it's one application that we can start with.
Yeah, it's always very competitive.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of bridges in the state that need replaced.
This happens to be the one over the river.
Yes.
Over the Sioux River.
Yes, this goes over the Big Sioux River, just north of State Highway 20, roughly a mile.
Critical infrastructure.
Yes.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries also. Item number 11, action to adopt Item number eleven, action to adopt a moratorium to prevent the construction of a jail building and all jail-related activities slash committees.
Yes, that's my, uh, this is my resolution. We have taken this to the voters twice. We have tried to, through sales tax, through the state twice as a means of revenue. I personally feel it's time to call a halt to it. At some time, this can be taken back up. We're facing economic times and it's time to put this to rest. Pure and simple.
I guess is, are you willing to make a motion to that, or?
I would be willing to make that a motion.
Second.
Okay, um, somebody gonna draft a resolution in the correct form?
Yeah.
Okay, this is not in the correct form?
No, I mean, is this a motion or is it a resolution?
Resolution.
Well, there's a lot more language that is needed.
He said resolution.
For a resolution.
Yeah, it says resolution right on the top.
Right.
It says it's a moratorium, it doesn't say.
Well, I'm not very good with words, so, uh, I'm good with, from the heart and from, from mind and sincerityness, but I'm not very good with words. So.
There's resolution examples out there, Charlie, you can just take one that we wrote earlier and modify this around that. Copy of that.
I have some comments, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I know, I, kind of like, well, we have a motion a second, but it's not really we don't have a discussion on here exactly.
Well, when you make a motion, you ought, you ought to have.
Even though it's not the correct sort of document that we're supposed to be doing, but go ahead, Commissioner Gable.
Yeah, so, I see this as a proposal, so the, the, the way the agenda item reads, it's a moratorium to prevent the construction of a jail building and all jail-related activities slash committees. So, I see this as a proposal to take away the freedom of officials duly elected by the people of Cottington County to discuss a topic for which they are held responsible under law. So, Title twenty-four, Chapter eleven, Section two, says there shall be established and maintained, but in every county, by authority of the Board of County Commissioners and at the expense of the county, a jail. Besides trying to prevent structural upgrades to the jail, this agenda item is worded in such a way that will prevent any improvement to jail operations and take away our freedom to speak about it as it seeks to prevent all jail-related activities and committees. Given the need for us to ensure that we have a safe and secure jail, this, that keeps the public staff and inmates safe, we must take this duty very seriously. And yet this proposal seeks to make us ignore a responsibility assigned to us under state law. So, in legalese, I believe this is called deliberate indifference. And deliberate indifference is a conscious disregard of known risk. Since we know the incarceration of criminal offenders in the jail entails very serious risks, this would be consciously disregarding the safety of the public, the staff, the inmates, and the constitutional rights of the accused. Adopting the moratorium called for by, by this resolution would be effectively saying that we are consciously choosing to disregard our legal responsibilities to keep, to keep a safe jail. So, the question is, why do we want to keep ourselves, why do we want to force ourselves to stop being diligent? So, this commission showed diligence by appointing a committee, the Cottington County Justice Advisory Committee in two thousand and fifteen, otherwise known as the CCJAC. That committee is designed to methodically work through the needs of our justice facilities and to recommend solutions to the commissioners. By the way, we adopted a charter, we control who's on the committee, and we have the authority to, to, to vote in the members of that committee. So, that is thoroughly documented, the needs of our facilities, and is making progress toward finding safe and cost-effective solutions. Some of the CCJAC's recommendations have come to fruition. This includes our new courtroom and security checkpoint, which were completed within the footprint of our historic courthouse at a fraction of the cost of the court space that was proposed back in two thousand and fourteen before the CCJAC existed. So, in addition, in addition to the CCJAC, this body has demonstrated due diligence in trying to minimize incarceration and to helping our sheriff and jail to improve their operations. These include the formation of the Behavioral Health and Justice Working Group, otherwise known as the Stepping Up Committee, to address mental illness among inmates in the jail, the formation of the Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative Committee, which reduces juvenile incarceration, the establishment of a system of specialized inmate healthcare, we recently awarded that proposal, and the most, and most recently, the acceptance of a proposal from a correctional food service company to provide inmate meals more cost-effectively. So, this agenda item proposes to place a moratorium on due diligence and discharging one of our most serious and difficult duties and replace it with deliberate indifference. So, we were elected by the people of Cottington County to be diligent about our duties, not to find ways to neglect them. I therefore urge that we vote no on this resolution. And, Madam Chair, I don't know if the state's attorney wanted to comment on this at all.
Is my, I was just.
Do you want to grab the microphone?
I was just handed a copy of what's the proposed resolution. I have concerns about the format that it's in, that, um, the way it is, I mean, it's not in the proper form for any action to be taken on it here today. That, I would just urge you to maybe table it this week, um, if you guys are interested in going forward with it, but that would be my concern, is just the format it's in, it's not, not appropriate.
The other thing I would add to what Commissioner Gable has said is, you know, when he talks about deliberate indifference, we've had jail studies that proves there are issues with our jail. If you put a moratorium on, that's just opening it up for lawsuits, because and there's, it's proven that there are structural deficiencies. The other thing is, is there's not even any talk right now of a jail or of facilities. And nobody's even mentioned the word, it's not even, I mean, when was the last time the Justice Advisory Committee met?
We met, we met, Madam Chair, we met, uh, I believe last fall, um, and, uh, the, we, so since then, we haven't met. The charter requires us to meet twice a year to just review the needs, so it's meant to be a standing committee. Obviously, if, you know, as the, uh, and availability of time, intention, resources, and the likelihood that we're gonna act quicker requires us to meet sooner, but right now, um, I'd say we're probably gonna meet, uh, maybe, I think we met four times last year, so, um, right now, we have, it's, it's almost June and we haven't met yet this year, so. But the requirement, the minimum is twice a year.
Right. I guess I don't see the need for this, uh, nothing's going on, we don't want to set herself up for lawsuits. Uh, it's just kind of going status quo.
If there's nothing going on, yes, Lee, I know you said it's gotta meet twice a year. And I know that you helped to write those rules and regulations. But what is the necessity of it if you're only gonna meet twice a year? Is it, is the necessity of it to future promote a building at the jail?
Well, I would, Commissioner Waterman, I would ask you to go back and take a look at the work that the committee has done, I mean, they've done.
I like the alternatives, Lee, I really do.
Okay, yes, right.
But both have to come out to an end sooner or later, you gotta let it play out.
Yeah, um, the, and that's what, that's basically, I think, why we're not meeting right now. So, so, for example, the, the, uh, the current, the new courtroom, I mean, that has probably gonna have an effect on things. However, we know there are deficiencies in that building, we've documented that. I mean, you can take a look at that yourself, that's all on the website, very transparently, um, available to the public, um, on the, uh, on the county website. And then, in addition to that, we, these are all, the way the resolution or the, the agenda item was worded, said all jail-related activities, so we're, we're dealing diligently with that. Why do we want to remove that? We have control over everything, every expenditure that happens dealing with the jail, we already have that. Why do we want to discourage debate when we're elected by the people to talk about stuff? Especially our responsibility under law to maintain a safe and secure jail.
The other thing I would add is, you know, what was the time period that you were saying, five years? To put this on?
There's no time frame on here.
Okay, I just heard you on the radio, I guess, the other day, and I'm, I heard you say five years.
I did say five years and, and that is, I was advised that that is an error and I should not have said that.
Right, because, uh, yeah.
This is, this is basically what it is.
So, right.
Also in the resolution here, the, the draft resolution here, Charlie, you have that requires a two-thirds vote of the commission to be reversed. So, that could be reversed under this at any time.
Definitely, that's why it's in there for future, if there arrives a need, yes, it can be reversed. There is no timeframe on this.
And, Mr., or.
Go ahead.
Uh, sorry, sorry, Madam Chair, so, Commissioner Waterman, so, it, your resolution also says purposes of promoting a new jail, so I, I'm assuming you're thinking of the CCJAC.
No, I'm not, no, I'm not, Lee. Okay, so, if I'm gonna interrupt you on that one, no, I'm not. When I'm talking about, uh, what you were talking about, it's, uh, passing it to, going to the vote of the people, the people have voted down twice, I'm out knocking on doors. I hear it all the time. When are you gonna do, what are you doing about the jail? What are you doing about the jail? I'm not gonna go into it a lot more, but some of it's not very pleasant.
Well.
And these half-cent sales tax going through the legislature, although it was approved by the county organization board, county boards, is another venue of taxation. It's not the half-cent, but it's another venue to open a taxation.
So, what, what don't you like? You don't like taking things to the voters?
I don't, I don't like another half-cent sales tax put on. That is not, that is, it's the venue of taking, of opening it up. Historically, we have not had this.
I, I guess I don't, I, Madam Chair, excuse me, if I can answer.
Go ahead.
So, I guess I don't understand what you mean by venue, but it's.
It's another door that's open for taxation.
So, the, the law tells us we have to, we have to maintain a jail. Occasionally, that means we have to tax the way South Dakota is put together.
That's right.
Is, is, is it means you have to go, you try to keep the taxes low, and when you have to raise them for a structure like this, you go to your voters. So, whether that's property tax or sales tax, I mean, I, I'm looking for ways to do that least, less expensively. So, if you wanna, if we wanna have a debate about that.
I follow that completely.
But I think, I think the thing, issue is, we're gonna have differences about how to do things. The question is, why do we want to limit ourselves when we've been talking about it? And having an organized committee to do it? That's what I, that's what I sense is the gist of your resolution. And the, the, the Justice Advisory Committee is not designed to promote anything, it's designed to study and propose, to make recommendations. So, it's, you can look at the work, you can look at the charter, give me some specifics. What's the problem in the charter? What's the problem in the work that the CCJAC has done? It seems to me it's been pretty diligent. Is that, is that, is that the issue?
Commissioner Van Duzen, were you gonna make a comment?
No, I just, you know, I was gonna refer back to the half-cent penny sales tax, and that, that's one thing that Commissioner Waterman and I will probably not see eye to eye on, and that's, um, you know, that res, that, um, that bill would have, would have actually allowed counties to fund county infrastructure, not just jail projects for, you know, like the extension building and stuff like that, for projects that, that are needed, that counties don't have money to, to do, and so, that we're depending on our property tax to do, so. I do support that, um, but I think the big issue here, Charlie, is, is that Cottington County, uh, has continued to spend money, and we have, and we've, we're even asked this budget year to put money into the budget for the, for another study, uh, for a consultant fee, if I remember right, and, uh, to, to go out and, and examine, uh, a jail facility, and I, and I don't know, I, I believe that that's probably your intent here is to stop that.
I, I've got multiple approaches, but that is one of them, yes.
So, you know, but, uh, as far as ten ninety-nine was concerned, I, I felt that that was a good bill and I, I did support that. Lee, you did a lot of work on it.
Yeah, I'm sure, so, appreciate your comments on the, on the, uh, this, the post bill ten ninety-nine. I mean, the idea with that, in our case, would save us three or four million dollars in financing fees, um, over property tax. So, the goal is to save taxpayers money with any of that stuff, but, um, as far as your, your comment about, um, a study in this year's budget or next year's budget, there's, there's nothing that I know of. I think I might have approached the subject maybe a year ago, but we have the power to approve the budget and it didn't go into the budget.
Right, right.
And so, that's, there, there are mechanisms built in all, all along the way where we have to take action. The county commission would have to take action on all these things.
That was stopped at the CCJAC level, I believe.
I think it probably was, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you know, and that's, that's the CCJAC doing, doing its work, so.
Well.
Mr. Johnson.
I, yeah, I've been sitting here pretty quiet, taking it all in, and I understand, uh, Harley's, uh, thoughts and, uh, I know out in the general public, uh, I don't think there's absolutely anybody sitting around this table right now that doesn't know or doesn't think that some now, we're gonna have to build a new jail or do some major updates or whatever to our current facility. Uh, now is not the time to do it. That's, that's my run talking, that's me talking. I, I have no statistics or anything to back that up, I'm just saying that, um, we really had a heck of a time uh, trying to sell it to the people in good times, you know, when, uh, things were doing pretty well. And it'd be just a little bit tougher now. And I think maybe sometimes you just have to stop and step back a couple of steps and just kind of let stuff simmer and take a look at it and, uh, know that somewhere down the road, we're gonna have to, uh, approach and take care of this situation and, and meet it head on. I applaud, uh, Lee for all the work that he has done. He's done a ton of work, put hours and hours into, uh, putting things together. And I especially applaud him for the ten ninety-nine, that, uh, legislation, and I, I just wish that that would have passed, and I know Harley, that maybe we don't agree there, but, um, this would be good for all counties and the state, just not got any county, if it were to pass. Uh, we need to, uh, figure out some different ways to increase revenue in our counties, and that would be, that would be one way that we could do that. Who knows, maybe down the road here in a couple of years, maybe, uh, if, if you were at the, uh, planning the zoning meeting the other day and you would see the, the building permits for wind towers in Cottington County are unbelievable. Was a hundred million dollars is what the building permits were, wasn't that the number? A hundred million or something like that? We're, you know, we're not gonna be bringing it in truckloads, but there will be another revenue source coming from, uh, that area. And, and so, uh, uh, maybe it's time that we just, uh, put a moratorium on it, like, uh, Commissioner Waterman said, that's, uh, know that we're not gonna put the fire out, but put a moratorium on it, step back for a couple of steps and let's see what happens. And I would encourage Lee to continue to, uh, fine-tune and work with the legislators on ten ninety-nine and see if we can get that baby to pass next year. That's kind of my two cents on it.
Becky, could we get you to come up? If we were to put a moratorium on this project, what, what would that set us up for?
As far as individuals in the jail.
Where's the mic?
Rick, have it, or?
Okay.
Should be on already.
It's all gonna be in the drafting of the resolution. I mean, the way it is right now, it's too broad, that it shuts everything down. It's gonna have to be very narrow if what you're wanting to do is to look at a future new jail, but even expand, I mean, right now, it's just too broad. That it's gonna have to be sufficiently narrow and carefully worded.
Because if, what could be the repercussion of doing that, though?
I mean, if, if you adopt it too broad, you can't do anything. You can't address the current needs, you can't address the safety risks that are, that arise. You can't look at anything under the broad moratorium that's suggested.
Right, and then, does that, that opens us up to lawsuits with individuals who are in the jail because of that deliberate indifference?
Correct, I mean, it, it opens the county up to exposure in a lawsuit.
So, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just, um, the, uh, so I guess I don't see the, the reason for this, I mean, we're, we're effectively kind of going, taking it slow right now anyway. And we have control over it. I mean, the, 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 the committee is an advisory body. We have the call, I mean, we're elected to make the call, we're elected to think about stuff. This is something under law that we're told to think about and to deal with and to address. Why do we want to put any hindrance on our ability to analyze, think, and work through solutions? I, I don't understand the purpose of this, this, uh, this motion or this resolution.
Well, this was my resolution and it, after, uh, getting a little advice on it, on the lines, we, we do know that our, all buildings, including the courthouse we're sitting in today, has a life. We know at some point in time, this will have to be replaced also. At some point in time, we'll have to replace a jail, but being, this was written. But being, this was written, and I'm not a flowery person, I'm going to withdraw this with the idea of bringing it back in the future under a more refined circumstance.
Okay. So you're withdrawing your motion?
I am withdrawing my motion.
Or, yeah, I guess.
That should end it.
Okay. All right, we will move on then to item number 12. Discussion regarding contracting with Interlakes Community Action for casework services. That is, they are, they ended up having a conference call this morning, so that will have to put off till another week. Number 13, discussion possible action on COVID-19 practices and procedures. I have one thing for sure. I did receive a call this morning from Becky out at the extension. There are some larger events that are going to start happening. I think June 6 is the first one, and then mid, there's other larger events. I guess something that I've been in conversation since, we received that email from Lynn Brand last week with SDML, been in conversation with Stacy Hegy. It's not totally done yet, and I'm going to include you, because we just had a late call Friday afternoon about having some of, like, before we'd open up the facilities, we have like a facilities use agreement. Did Becky get that email as well? We'll forward that on, so you can have a look at it too. So that when we have, when we do open up to the public, that we would have some sort of a lease waiver that they would have to sign to help with liability on those sorts of things. And even out at the park, I don't know if we ever did anything, you know, with the playground, we talked about that. So those are things we, like, when they come to check in at the park, that they would sign a waiver that if their children play, you know, take your own responsibility, basically, so that the county can't be held liable for anything. I'll forward that on to you. It's just some thoughts right now that maybe we need you to see if that would be a route, before we start opening things up any further, that we're protected on liability wise, so.
So your thoughts, Brenda, that everybody that comes in the door will have to sign a piece of paper?
I think you're talking about campers and people who went out to facilities.
Yeah, it would be the event, the person who is in charge or organizing the event, they would have to sign the waiver. But we'll let Becky weigh in on that. It is by SDML. I mean, it was kind of just their use agreements, just for an added layer of protection, so.
Is that something we could take up maybe next week if it's?
Yeah, because we'll share with Becky. Like I said, it was late Friday before I was able to have a conversation with Stacy. And then we got it forwarded on to show you what they are. So it's just a work in progress, just something that we want to maybe kind of start thinking about and have in place, so.
Madam Chair, I did have one item under this agenda item. So on the Back to the Normal Plan, if we, everybody should have a paper copy of just some, some minor changes. So if everything kind of, the kind of the idea with our Back to the Normal Plan, I think we kind of came in with the understanding that we'd probably be opening up, you know, on Election Day or right after. And so you can see that there's a couple of things lined out in Phase Two under the criteria. And given the fact that we are, and one of those criterion are, or one of the criteria was a downward trend in new cases in our county, and that was kind of based on the state guidance and the state Back to Normal Plan. However, given the fact that we're testing a lot more, we probably, I would suggest that we remove that criterion, because we are gonna see, as the governor said, we're gonna see an increase in cases. The question is, do we have an increase in hospitalizations, you know, in other words, serious cases? And that's, that's not, that's kind of a separate thing from county facilities anyway. But leave on the no new active cases among employees, you know, when you're talking about each facility. So the courthouse, extension center, whatever. And then, so this, and then reword that last criterion where we had the primary election completed and just say absentee slash early voting completed. So Election Day itself, the courthouse could be open, because all the election operations will be out at the extension center that day. So, I mean, if we, if we agree to update this plan, and so the way the resolution that enacted this plan is worded is that we will do updates to this plan. And we should probably do, take a, you know, action to do so as a, as a commission if we want to. But we'd update this plan, and then if we do this, that means the courthouse opens up on, on Election Day, on a week from today. So that's what, that's what this would mean.
Okay.
So unless I'm missing something in here, do you wanna?
Cindy, does that, Election Day, is that a day that's gonna work for you and your office?
Yes, because we do need, we, we are supposed to be open to the public that night for the process of counting the ballots. So yes, that, it'll be, it's much more friendly to us rather than June 1st. June 2nd is definitely, I have a question, though. Is it gonna be a requirement for count, for employees to wear masks at the counter?
Let's see, it says Plexiglas or other shields at customer counters, otherwise.
Oh, otherwise, all right, okay. So we do have, okay.
One or the other.
Okay.
One or the other.
All right.
So that's, you know, there in place. I think, Steve, we have the stuff pretty much ready to go.
Everything in place.
The reason I'm asking Steve is because one of the things is to have the equipment and supplies in place. And Jamie talked a lot about that, too. So, and I think we've talked to the, to the staff pretty well. So as we went, especially when we were developing the plan. So my motion is to make these, these updates to the Back to the Normal Plan. So, and to review what those updates are, is to remove the criterion about a downward trend in new cases and to change the wording of the last criterion from primary election completed to absentee slash early voting, absentee slash early primary voting completed. So that's my motion.
All right.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Van Duzen. Any other discussion? The white person, Cindy, maybe. So we got a motion by Gable, second by Van Duzen, to accept this plan. And then that would mean opening next Tuesday morning at 8:00 a.m., June 2nd.
Question, Lee. You mentioned the courthouse. What about the outside facilities?
So, yeah, this would be a good question. So this applies to, this would apply to all the facilities.
County facilities.
Yeah.
Courthouse was mentioned, but to avoid confusion.
Yeah, so this would really apply to all facilities at this point. And that, you can apply this, the way this is set up, there's a couple of parenthetical comments where it says by facility. So the idea with that is, say, if you have, say, if an employee in one facility, say, the courthouse gets infected, well, you don't want to have to shut down the extension center or the auditorium. So it's by facility, so, yeah.
Right, correct.
In Phase Two, it does say other facilities open to the public.
Yeah, and, and the other, the other thing is, so, since we took, took that third, if we're taking that third criteria, the downward trend criterion away, that means that, you know, the election wouldn't really apply to, say, you know, the welfare, the bill, you know, the auditorium where the, where the veterans and the welfare office are, for example, so.
That's your question? Yes, thank you. Just wanted to clarify that, that's all.
Sure thing.
All right, so a motion and second. Any other discussion?
Just for clarification, Madam Chair, we are looking at reopening county facilities on Tuesday, June 7.
That's correct. Any other discussion? We're ready to vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose, that motion carries. We will be open.
Can I make one quick comment? So I, I, I'm gonna, I'll post a new version of this on the website. And I'd urge the public to take a look. We're still wanting to do the social distancing and be careful. And it's kind of like what the businesses, what we've seen our businesses in Watertown and Cottonton try to do, just, you know, be diligent. Try to, most, you know, most businesses, you know, try to, try to do things careful, carefully and right. But, you know, as we learn more about the virus, we'll be able to, to maybe relax some of that. But, you know, we want to get back to the new normal as soon as we can. Thanks.
And I guess Cindy, just for all of you, I don't know if any of you looked at that email that she forwarded to all of us from our SDML? So that, that's what I was talking about, these waivers, and that was included as part of that. So I guess if you want to weigh in on that, what your thoughts are, just, it's just an added layer of protection for us by, by doing that. So, anyway. So item number 14. I also had an individual give me a call. They would like to have a wedding out at Memorial Park. That would be, so we should, we're, we're open out there, basically. It would be a very small wedding. They would come in on the 11th, just to have like an hour rehearsal. And then on the 12th is when the actual wedding would be, like, maybe five to seven, something like that. But now, if we're gonna be open, you know, I don't know if they plan on using any of the facilities. At, when she visited with me, they didn't at that time, so I don't know.
Currently, I couldn't tell you for sure if they are planning on using facilities. I was just approached by Brenda on this, just the other day on.
What areas do they intend to use?
This is, this would be over by where the church, the memorial.
So it's no place that they have to reserve?
No place they have to reserve, it's outside setting.
Okay, just wanted to know if it'd be okay to do that.
Social distancing, I guess, I don't know how that happened with the bride and groom, but.
I think it's within family. Maybe that's what you want to say, within family units. Yeah, so that was another thing that, maybe that waiver or something, you know, I don't know. Anyway, something that we'll.
That would probably be something for them to sign and something like that. I do know, like, looking at that waivers and all that, I know that the playground equipment, it was also in there as long as you post.
Assigned.
Assigned by the playground equipment, that, you know, that basically that this is not basically disinfected, that pretty well, I followed the same guideline of what the city of Watertown did. I pretty well copied verbatim on their signage, so.
You have signage out there, because even over there.
There are signage out there.
By where they do the church services, it might not hurt to put one there.
I know there, I know there's one at all the playground equipments, and I can't remember where they placed the other one.
When I was out there this, this weekend, all of the, like, the horses that you ride and stuff on the west side were still covered up. But the playground was open.
The playgrounds were open.
Over by the, the main office, but.
So anywhere's where there's, it'd probably be good to pop a sign down.
Congregated people.
Like at the restroom, yeah. Those, those sorts of places would be, and that was something Stacy mentioned also, you know, that, that's another layer of protection, so.
Underneath the memorial campground, we're opening the courthouse June 2nd. Are we also gonna open the restroom facility? I guess I would suggest probably to open them. I mean, like I said, we can disinfect them quite regularly. The volunteers are all be instructed of how often that they need to disinfect. And so that, and then how often that they need to clean the bathrooms itself.
So you think you could take care of that?
Yeah, I think they could be pretty well taken care of.
It's not gonna burden the staff?
No.
What is, maybe Jamie, you want to weigh in on that? What's your thoughts are as far as the bathhouses, showers?
I'm not sure if the shower facilities are opening up at the state, but I do believe that the comfort stations have slowly opened as far as restrooms.
Right.
But I think they're doing their hour, but they're still kind of furloughed at this point. And I think they're finding out a lot of the state reaction. I'll find out Saturday, I'm gonna state meeting.
Right.
Whether they're coming back to work June 1st. I don't believe they're using shower facilities.
Yeah, I was told by, by parking, or the game fishing park, the showers were open. Yep, they opened all the facilities up. They have limited staff, but like I said, probably come June, they'll end up restaffing higher.
Yeah. Steve was the, I was out, I, I went out on Sunday, just to see how things were going out there. And it looked to me like if it wasn't 100% full, it was 98.9 or 99. I think I did see maybe one or maybe two open spots, but there was no, there was no distance there. I mean, it was camper on camper out there.
Yeah, I, I was out Sunday evening myself also and so that. And I know you had a hard time trying to find a spot to park. I had relatives that were in the upper campground. We actually had to park the playground equipment, because it was full.
Yeah, in fact, I, I noted that there was, it looked like graduation parties, where maybe two or three people had gotten together, and they had their graduation party out there.
And that might be so. I do know that there was some birthday party stuff going on. I know that there's some few family reunions, because they couldn't probably host anything in the, in the shelters or anything. They probably had gatherings by the campground sites.
I was maybe a little bit concerned about the closeness, but it was, just tickled me to see people active and going, and the boats out in the lake, and people docking their boats, and it's just like the world had come to life again.
You know, and that's probably somewhat, maybe why the state kind of wanted to keep their parks open, to let people have at least some chance to know, at least have, you know, social distancing, but yet to have some normalcy go on. Is everybody practicing social distancing? Probably not. But they're, they're probably trying to do at least their diligence to, to accomplish this, too.
All right, so then we're all okay. I don't know if we have to do a formal, if we're opening up all facilities, including the bathhouses and showers, is that what the intentions are?
That would be my intention.
There was nothing in this document to exclude Memorial Park, so.
So it's all.
It may be good to just take a, if you want to do that, I mean, we have Memorial Park identified separately on the agenda, it might be good to.
It won't hurt.
All right, so if someone wants to.
I'll make a motion.
A motion?
I don't know, did you make a motion already?
I just brought it up for discussion, but you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
What's your motion?
To reopen.
All facilities?
All facilities.
At Memorial.
At Memorial Park, yeah.
Okay. All right, any other discussion on that? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose. Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 15, action to approve claims for payment. We had some of those.
We have a few claims that have popped up that we need to take care of. We also need to take care of salary claims, so let's do that one first. On the salary claims that I, I provided you, you can see in the different departments, the step increases that you previously approved. So we have to publish those whenever somebody has a salary change throughout the year. So total salary claims for the month of May were $552,590.88.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, motion by Gable, second, second by Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, that motion carries. Item number 16.
We do have other claims, sorry, that I have to go over.
Okay.
Yep. So we have an employee who is on unpaid FMLA. So we had to cut separate checks for that employee's insurances, which we are required to pay during FMLA leave. First one is to Delta Dental for $42.50. Second one is Reliance Life Insurance for $5.38. Sanford Health is $712.68. We also had our 911 March surcharge collections that we paid to the city of Watertown in the amount of $23,020.15. We had an individual who was scouring the countryside for us, looking for sanitizing wipes. And this person found us a large number of sanitizing wipes. And we are reimbursing great targets, $116.43 for sanitizing wipes that should see us through for a while. And then we have our visas that are paid by ACH at this time of the month to avoid interest charges. So the sheriff's office and the county jail had supplies and travel and miscellaneous costs of $2,516.78. Some of that is grant reimbursed, will be reimbursed by a grant, COVID grant. Some of it was for travel and various supplies. And we also have another visa payment in the amount of $184.64. And that was for commissioner's budget. Part of, one, one item was a USB sound adapter. Part of it was the Zoom.
Zoom, yeah.
Annual for, for one-year Zoom subscription, yep. And the final visa. And the final visa, one, two more, two more visa checks. One for $22.11 for the register of deeds for various supplies that were picked up. And the final one is for emergency management, $166.68. This was also for various supplies, gloves. It's like travel, a number of different things, miscellaneous charges, so.
Make a motion to approve those.
Second.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries also. Alright, item number 16, action to approve automatic, automatic budget supplements, historic preservation grant funds.
And the county is a sponsor of a grant for the Historic Preservation Commission, which is the museum across the street. The museum had $1,165 in costs for various memberships. In the last, for the last year, we applied to the Historic Preservation Commission for grant reimbursement in the amount of $1,165. And that needs to go back into the historic preservation budget. It's an automatic supplement.
Motion by Johnson, second by Waterman. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Action number 17, to approve personnel changes.
Couple of those. Marci Rosso is the cook in the detention center, do an anniversary step, increase to step 11, 1956 per hour. And Galen Geffrey is a seasonal custodian at the highway department, step 11450 per hour.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Waterman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item number 18, action to approve travel requests. Shouldn't have any of them probably at the time. 19, public notices, possible quorum, don't have any of that. Item number 20, old business.
As Madam Chair, just to update on the, the discussion we had last week about IT, managed IT services. So I've been doing some research on that. I think, I know some of the, some of the offices, particularly the sheriff's office, were budgeting for that anyway. So I'm, I still need to do a little bit of research on a couple of things. But it is possible, you know, if an office wants to go ahead and do that this year, they could. But also looking into the possibilities of maybe just going ahead or whether, whether or not we do it, you know, countywide for everybody, you know, that would be my suggestion. Or waiting until, just budgeting it for the following year. And, and then how do we implement it as, as just one expense for the county or by department? And so, so for the, you know, the larger departments where they, they use IT services a lot and have to call people in, it probably makes, you know, to them, it's, it's a bit more like, you know, in the forefront of their mind, that it'd be nice to have managed IT services for the, for the offices with just a couple of PCs. Obviously, it looks a little different to them, so. But anyway, so just a quick update on that. And then just on the, two weeks from today at our meetings, we have, one is the, just a reminder, we have that Great Plains Lutheran nonprofit fund thing, that's the ninth.
That's the ninth.
Yeah, two weeks from, two weeks.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was thinking of the week of, okay, sorry.
And then, and then also the, the human resources proposals are due on the ninth. So we probably won't, I would be surprised if we would accept a proposal that day, but, but we'll, we'll announce who they came from, if we do get any, so.
Alright, I don't know if this is somebody who's calling in for the open, but it's my personal.
Next week's meeting is Thursday at 2:00, as opposed to, we should probably remind people of that.
Yep, we will mention that again, but it will be on Thursday at 2:00 P.M. Alright, and any new business then? Sure, please probably come and tell us if somebody would have called in, right? They kind of know that. Alright, then move on to number, item number 22, the open. Is there any comments on the open portion? Do we have any need for an executive session today?
I would request an executive session for the purpose of one, discussion personnel issues.
Alright. And I would look for a motion and second to go into executive session.
Make that motion, go into executive session.
Alright.
I'll second it.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion, will there be any action after?
No.
Okay, so I will stop the stream, so.
Okay.
Thanks everyone.
Sounds good.
Don't let me forget, you have things to sign.
Yep. Yeah, I got a whole, all of these as well.